Okay, the regular meeting of the Richmond Community Schools. We'll come to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take a roll call.
The Richmond Community Schools, we empower, I'm sorry, we provide quality education and empower students to be successful in the global community. Board member Tom Toh.
Here.
Board member Cunningham.
Here.
Board member Aldani.
Here.
Board member Masham.
Here.
Board member Bud Toh.
Here.
I am board member Fortuna, I am also here. Board member Sun is absent with notice, so we do have a quorum. And we also do have our two student representatives, Joseph Basido and Lizbeth Schaefer.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. If I have support.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wombley?
There were no questions brought to my attention regarding the personnel report for the minutes that are in the board pack-in. I do want to point out to the board, this is the first time you're getting the district head count and FTE equivalent. It's provided by Sarah Higgin, our people accounting, so it will give you a sense of our current numbers and where we stand. Going to have to be respected.
Anyone have any questions? I have one. In the personnel report, on all three schools, we have crossed out student staff help, then on this chairperson? Just curious.
I had Mr. Field resend that posting because that was paid through the 31AA grant last year. And so we were still finalizing at the time whether we were getting or what we were getting from that 31A. And I don't believe it's yet on our state aid report, what our allocation is. But we do have three people that, if we can keep it, then they would have those positions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Margaret.
Okay. Margaret Goberse, in the case.
Just on the, I guess Jamie to ask this question, the resignations and retirements. There's an asterisk, which says verbal resignation, but there isn't anything by either one of those names to.
Always should have been a custodial position.
So that was the one who was the verbal?
Yep, yep.
And I guess because, I know we almost get them in writing, we accept verbals? What's the?
What policy allows for that?
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Candace?
Yes. For the assistant cook position, I know that we filled that position, is that correct?
Which position, I'm sorry?
The assistant cook.
Ah, yes.
Are we hiring another one?
There's a district, she was a district floater, she moved to the assistant cook at Lee, so this floater position's still out there.
Okay, so there's still.
If you recall, we have in the food service two floater positions, much like we did with the transportation, where we hired more bus drivers than we actually have runs, so that we always have someone to backfill positions for absence, et cetera. So it's that similar concept, if they are floater, then they can move to a building specific position. And then if everybody's on staff and they're there, they help do some of the scratch cooking that the students and all that, the food service.
So basically, that person went from floater into position that's what leaves us having now a floater hanging out there. Okay.
So technically, we're staffed.
Right.
Fully staffed, we just don't have the extra person.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our club double raves. Sandy?
So I have two raves. I attended the conversation with the community, I think that's what it's called, I might have missed that correct. And so I just wanted to rave on everyone who put that together. Billy was there, did a great job. Superintendent Wombley was there, did a great job. I really appreciate you guys doing these, it's very informative. I learned things. I wish that there was more participation, but hopefully as we keep doing that, that happens. But I just wanted to rave on you guys for doing that, thank you. Thank you for the good work that you did. I also was going to give Danielle Sutton a little shout-out for setting up the board to go and do the trunk or treat, which I and a few other board members that go to, and it was a really good time, so I appreciate her setting that up. And then also, I did attend the conference over the weekend, and I just wanted to rave, once again, on Cynthia for putting that all together, making sure that we had what we needed to have, so anywhere we were going, and things like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, Tracy?
Yeah, I was one of the folks at the trunk or treat, and it was a lot of fun and a good time, and families, I think, were all excited to be there, so thank you to the PTA for making that happen, and everybody. I mean, there was a haunted spooky bus, and there was just all kinds of fun things, and the kids were very excited to be there. So, I don't know, did we probably end up on 1,700 or so pieces of candy?
It sure felt like it.
At least. I mean, it was, it was like, a lot of people, so that's fun.
Thank you. Barbara?
I'm just gonna echo, I wanted to rave Danielle as well for getting board members to do it, it was my first trunk or treat, and I would do it again. It was, it was really, yeah, it was, it was really, it was fun, and Cynthia did a good job organizing it, so.
Thank you. Yep, Candace?
I have a couple, a few. Definitely thank you Cynthia for getting all of our conference stuff together for us. It was, it went very smooth with all your help and planning for us, everything was pretty much planned out, so it was very nice. I did want to also thank Mr. Marchley for doing your public Q and A last week, and I also am very disappointed that we didn't have more of our district parents come and kind of learn, and it was, it was very informative, and there was a lot of good parenting there, so I know that many could have learned a lot from that, so hopefully next time there'll be more participation. Then the other thing I wanted to say was, I was honored to be invited to attend the Cedar Point trip with Ms. Jack and the school band, marching band, the player, and the theater group last Saturday. And it was quite a, quite a wonderful experience, because Jack has everything just so thought out at the time in Grepland, and it was just a perfect trip. But I did want to give a shout-out to a specific student, and her name is Courtney Henry, and I happened to have her in my group that I was chaperoning, and that young lady is just absolutely amazing, and I can't explain just how, the wealth of knowledge that she has, and she's just far advanced for her years, and if we ever need a student to come back and do any sort of helping and educating others, she's just, she's super, super sweet girl, so I did want to give a shout-out to Courtney Henry.
Kelly?
So I didn't make it to the trunk or treat because I was on the football field, so I just want to tell the football program, middle school and high school, that they've had a great season, and also the band. That glow thing afterwards was pretty awesome, it did look neat, that definitely had to be something that you guys continue, continue doing. That was actually a lot, everyone really enjoyed that a lot. Yeah. But you guys all had a great season, the whole football, all the sports teams, really. Of course, football's the one that I tend to go to, and I know varsity is going to playoffs now, so congratulations to them. Thank you.
I too wish to thank Cynthia. As Candace said, we arrived there, everything went really smooth, we just got in, got our room, and away we went. One of the things I learned from our conferences we had is to make sure that we are thanking our staff or anybody, so I have chosen to thank our paraprofessionals for all of their assistance in helping our students in the district.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our student board representative. Shall we hear the start? Or Lisbon? Go ahead.
So I'm starting with the Lee School, they took a field trip to the corn farm, corn maze. They went on a hairride, had cider and donuts, and then they took a pumpkin home, and they had a lot of fun. Preschool had their annual fall social on Wednesday, October 23rd. They read the book The Biggest Pumpkin Ever, Mr. Gibson, had a really good time painting pumpkins with their families. They were confused with preschool courtyard and enjoyed some cider and donuts. And then they got to see Jack the Great Pumpkin in that preschool courtyard, which coming from someone who saw it with my third grade class is really awesome. They got to measure the circumference, its height, how much it weighs, and they had a lot of fun with that, and they wanted to thank Miller Transit Mix for partnering. Bring it to the kids.
For the middle school, the Boobash was held on Friday, October 25th, and it was awesome. We're very grateful to everyone who made the event possible, especially RMS, PTO, so fantastic, it was great. Halloween was celebrated on Friday for the students, so this Thursday for the spirit week will be black and orange, or Halloween shirt day. The first quarter of school ends on Friday, that day will be a half-day for our students. We are extremely excited to begin our fourth and fifth grade support classes this week with Mrs. Salins and the title team. It's awesome to have that going on. Positive You continued with our identified leadership team, along with our teachers conducting the short, meaningful weekly lessons in class, talking about student leadership, helping these, you know, young students become great, great future RMS students and leaders. And we got our annual Veterans Day assembly at 1:45 in the middle school gym on Monday, November 11. High schools got a lot of stuff going on, especially for our CTE experiences and work-based learning field trips. The accounting students participated in Accounting Day hosted by Macomb Community College on October 25th. Teacher cadet students went to Saginaw Valley State University on October 25th for our Future Educators Conference. Computer programming students have a trip to Little Caesar's Arena to learn about IT careers. Television broadcasting students are attending the Michigan Association of Broadcasters Conference on November 7th. Oh wait, there's more. Marketing two students are also going to the Parade Company on November 13th to learn about company marketing and Thanksgiving Day Parade. Super packed, a lot of stuff going on, it's really awesome to continue to enforce these programs. Halloween costume contest, whoop whoop, will take place on October 31st. There'll also be a scavenger hunt during the week for the students, in between classes, you know, they'll have a chance, go look for some stuff depending on the class. Justin's will be in the building on November 1st, they will be meeting with the sophomores about ordering class rates, which I still need to do. They also will meet with the class of 2025 to discuss ordering caps, gowns, graduation announcements. Class of 2025 swag, as it's been dubbed. And Mr. Osborne has organized multiple college visits for the month of October. It's been great, students have been able to come in and attend using QR codes to sign up and show up to the seminars they've got going on. They'll bring in someone from the college, tell them about it, answer questions, it's like one-on-one, it's really, really great for the students who are interested in attending those colleges. It's, it's just, I have almost attended every single one of them, I think I missed one because I had a test to take. But if students are still interested in exploring colleges that are not homeless, or haven't come to Richmond to kind of like lay down some information, they can book an appointment with Mr. Osborne and get more information from him.
And then I just wanted to add that, the Saginaw field trip was very nice, all the breakout rooms, as they call it, were very informative. Food was really good. And then we were touring around campus by two Richmond alumni, Austin, I can't remember his last name, and then Courtney, she graduated, I think, two years ago, and they're both pursuing an education major at Saginaw.
Austin Moore.
I think so, it was very nice.
Yeah, it's Austin Moore and Courtney, Courtney Van Gaten.
Yes, it was very nice, they toured us around campus, we saw like the track and field, I think we saw some of the dorms and stuff, so it was really nice, and really well set up, I'm sorry. So for after-school activities, fall sports are starting to ramp up, we have two cross-country runners competing in state finals on Saturday. Sawyer Rosberg and Mason Petrichowski.
Petrichowski.
I totally butchered that, so. Varsity football's traveling tournament on Friday, it'll be really cool. Playoffs, they defeated Lance Cruz on Friday, 35 to 14. They had senior night for the football players, band members, cross-country runners, golfers, and cheerleaders. The marching band performed their first glow show, and it was, I really enjoyed it, I got to sit up close, so it was really cool to see. Varsity volleyball finished third in the B-WAC following Saturday's league tournament. They will be hosting a district tournament next week on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Middle school girls' basketball and wrestling has started up, they have their first competitions this week. Girls' basketball begins at home at 4:30 on Monday, November 4th versus Inland City. They have another game Wednesday, which is away at Armada. And then our high school theater program is also working very hard, having their first off-script run-through today. And then, I think that's about it, I think wrestling has an away meet at Baccarat, and then another one at Northwood, should I move it?
My gosh, there's a lot going on.
Definitely, very busy, but you know, nearing the end of that quarter, it's always that time, semesters, but yeah, super awesome. I'll go down on our end.
I just want to, so they got you in at the campus and talking about going there for, to get your teaching.
Yes.
Okay, and how many kids went?
It was both year one and year two, so I think there's 14, including Mr. Harmon in my class, and then I think about the same, so about 28 people.
Okay.
Yeah, they even had like a breakout room talking about like how to get your teaching certificate before the law, like the legislative changes, and they talked about like the bands, because they changed like the way you can get your certificates, like three through six, like they talked about all those changes. I personally went to a room about special education and going into that, and didn't use teachers, but it was, it was really nice, very well solved. It wasn't, it didn't feel long either, it felt pretty quick, and.
Because you're really interested.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was fun.
I mean, it is that part, you know, that's what you're interested in doing, that's good, that's exciting. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for our students? Okay, I'm excited. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our superintendent legislative update.
There is no legislative update, they are, the elections. As was stated, November 1st, this Friday, is the last day of our first marking period, and it is a half-day for Rutgers Day in the afternoon. Just a reminder, there's no preschool or DCSE program on that half-day. Our report cards will be released the following week. Younger grades, we mail them home. Secondary, it's through power school, the parents can get a hard copy if they wish to have a hard copy. This Friday is also, just happened to get a flyer I came across, so I knighted the races for our Richmond Wrestling Association. If you're still interested, contact, divert money used for their program. This Saturday. There's like two flyers that are, that I'm going to speak to you, one is a pink one, one is a white one. This Saturday is McComb Reads event. It's a free event for all McComb County students in McComb County school districts, which includes Richmond, even though if you don't live in McComb County, you can still attend because you are part of Richmond. It's a free event that promotes literacy, Mark Hackel, our county executive, will be there, Jackie Page, the news anchor for WWJ Radio News, Michigan Chiller's author, Jonathan Rans will be there, and illustrator, Ms. Jackson will be there, Be Jackson, and Magic will be also by Jason Magic. There'll be puppet shows, book giveaways, STEM and art activities, a DJ, character mascots. Kids walk out of that event, students that go to that with a lot of books to be, build their library at home. Again, it's open to all 21 districts plus the MISD, so 22 districts in McComb County. You just need to register at misd.net/mcombreads. We did put this on our Facebook and social media post, and we have been promoting it, especially with the elementary, pre-K and elementary grades. The second flyer I put out there is the Richmond Roaders, you'll probably ask why am I promoting this? Part of it is because they give thousands of dollars back to our district with student scholarships, donations to various groups such as band robotics, athletic team, they donated to the foundation on activities. But they're having a fundraiser, it is a Julie Piano's event on November 8th, I will be attending, if anybody would like to attend, I'd be more than happy to reserve you a spot at our table if you want, or if you have your own table if you want to. But it's, it's a great way to give back to an organization that sole purpose is to raise money, give out the funds they raised to various groups and organizations.
Can I ask a question about the reading tournament thing, if you know the answer? So, is there a deadline for registering, because it's coming up so quickly?
They have taken, literally even walk-ins that day, they primarily need it for kind of food counts, and to make sure, because they don't want, they want no student not to have the activities and the free stuff that they're giving.
Perfect, okay, and then is it, is it like pre-K through 12, or is it?
It's primarily pre-K through elementary school.
Just elementary school, okay.
So around fifth grade is typically elementary school in our county, so that's the A group there. Arkansas Michigan Chiller's is probably an upper elementary school author.
Yeah.
Early middle school, too. If you have read any of his books, they're really, they're really good, they're very good, so. Put a couple of author signatures on those books. It was previously mentioned about the community conversations, our next one is Tuesday, November 19th, it's a Tuesday, not a Monday, and our focus will be on the audit, which is the board will be presented the week before, but also just talking about school finance, how our funds are, we get our funds, what we can and can't spend the funds on, et cetera. So it'll all be about school finances, our next topic. Just a reminder, on Election Day, which is eight days away, there is no school for students. Our teachers and administrators will be in the district learning that day from 8 to 3. Secretaries will also be here, but just so you know, if you call the buildings, they may not be in the office. Often times that day is a day to get kind of caught up in things that they don't normally get to do on a regular day, but board office will still be open. And as I said, Election Day is eight days away, I encourage everybody to get out and exercise their right to vote as a registered voter, whether it's in-person, early voting, or absentee ballot. Our elected officials shape policies that we all have to live with, and so as a superintendent here, I would like elected officials who are pro-public education, pro-schooled, pro-students, and pro-families in our, in our area, so just encourage everybody to educate themselves on the candidates, but most importantly, get out and vote for that election. And then finally, I'll just, for the board, and really for anybody, after the election is often called lame duck, and it's a time that we watch very closely, because sometimes very good policies can be put in place, but more often than not, very bad, not well-thought-out policies are put in place. So on November 18th, the Michigan School Board Association will be hosting, they haven't released any more details, but they will be coming, it's called a view from the Capitol lame duck edition, where they'll discuss what's going to, what they anticipate happening based on the election results. Any rumors, it'll be taken question, so just, if you have the ability to participate, I would encourage you, because a lot can happen in just a very short time after the election and before they break for the holidays in December.
Did you think it was day number?
It's on November 18th, it's supposed to be around noon time that day, but they haven't released any other information at this point, it's coming. But again, it kind of depends on the outcome of the election and which way things are going.
If you hear anything, if you could just pass it on.
I believe that's, that's all I have.
Just adding to this piece here, we went to a legislative update at our conference this past weekend, and we need to pay attention, because there are some things coming up that are not good for schools, so we need to find out what's going on. Okay, next item is our interests from the board, we'll start with Candy, Candace, let's go.
I just have one thing, I just want to wish all three of our school board candidates good luck, and however it may be, I look forward to working with you, and, you know, good luck, and that's it.
Thank you, Barbara.
I'm not sure you're allowed to do that, and I have nothing.
I think she just can't say.
I don't, I'm just saying I don't think you're allowed to make any kind of statement about the election, but I'm not in the filter.
We can say to vote.
No, I believe we can't, I don't think that's allowed.
We were talking about that this week, I believe we can say that, you just can't say vote.
Danielle's not here, Kelly?
Nope.
Okay, Sandy?
So, two things, during the conference that I, that we attended, one of the CBA classes that I attended was about the board self-evaluation, and I know that we are going to do a presentation, and I will do a much more in-depth presentation as to what we, you know, what I learned in my classes or whatever, but I just wanted to just make sure that everybody gets the training on the new superintendent evaluation, because we, because I did learn, and I didn't know this before, that if you're not trained on the new evaluation, then you can't participate in the evaluation. You can't even be in the closed session if Mr. Wombley doesn't decide to do closed session, or at the table if he doesn't decide to do it in an open, I guess, session. So if you haven't got that done, to get that done, so that, because that, I think, our, the evaluation date we have is November 18th, yeah, so to get it done before then, I suppose. And also, just wanted to, with, I know that Halloween's not here yet, but with the holidays coming up fairly quickly, just wanted to make sure that everybody knew if you need assistance with any holiday stuff, or if you're looking to help, our point person is Sam Perry, social worker, Sam Perry. To go onto the Richmond website, go under Student Services, right behind you.
Student Support Services.
Yeah, Student Support Services, and then you'll see a link for either holiday assistance, or also you can find Sam Perry and her contact information there. So if you're looking to help or looking for help, that is the point person this year. And probably the sooner they get that information, the better off everybody will be.
Also? Tracy?
That's good.
Okay, I just wish to share, first off, Sandy, Candace and I did go to the MISD Leadership Conference this past weekend. I just want to thank the district for covering our costs. As Sandy has alluded, we're going to do a presentation at the next board meeting, on what we did and what we saw, and things that we learned, and I learned quite a bit. I did email, as Sandy has said, we're talking about Brian's evaluation, I did email the document to you today, asking that you get it back to me, and I forget the date I put it up, but it's like the Monday, you said, did you say the 11th?
Yes.
Yeah, you did. Okay, thank you. So the 11th, so that way I can get it all together in a document, and that we can share and work on when we go to the 18th. Okay? That's it for me. Okay, next item on our agenda is our public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board has not received any emails, and there are no public comments from the last meeting we need to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name, you will have three minutes to address the board, are there any public comments? Being no public comments, next item on our agenda is we are going to go into closed session, so I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to MCL 15268, section 8H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purposes of considering material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. Do I have support?
Support.
You?
Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Are we going into the conference room? We will be back. We have a couple motions to pass if you want to say. Okay, we're going to go back into open session at 7:49. Give Brian here a minute to sit down. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of an overnight extended trip request to Ohio.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight slash extended wrestling trip to Findlay, Ohio, as presented at the October 14, 2024 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the motion for the approval of the 13th Amendment of the contract for superintendent.
I motion to approve the 13th Amendment of the contract for the superintendent as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Any discussion?
Do you mind if I make a statement?
No.
This contract just addresses primarily the evaluation, which has been changed by the law in July 1, the evaluation process, so, and all the corresponding applications with that evaluation process.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of gifted healthcare education agreement.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract for gifted healthcare education in effort to staff vacant special education teacher positions. The cost of the third-party teacher will vary depending on experience, certifications, and the timing of the contract.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll just say this, we had, you approved a third party, we have not found a candidate in the last one, the last third party. This was another one that we were exploring. We did interview a candidate. The candidate seemed liked and had, and felt that would be a good fit, or to see if they're going to accept the position and join. If they don't, move back to square one of the, there's nobody not getting services, I want to make sure that it's very clear. All students of the AEDs are receiving the appropriate services at times, it's just keynotes are getting typed.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just the rate, the rate of pay is what we pay? How's it work?
It's typically a higher rate, but if you looked at the total value, total cost of the teacher, like their retirement and so forth, it gets pretty close to that, all inclusive.
And then I read in this information that there's a replacement fee? Is that right?
If we hire the person, if we hire them, then they basically have a placement. We pay them a fee if we permanently hire them within so many days, it can end the contract. It's typically not what we've done.
Okay.
But if for some reason we do, because we're basically taking their employee...
So that would be if it was a permanent hire?
Correct.
Which is a contract, essentially.
Correct.
There's that fee?
Yes.
That goes to this company?
To this.
God.
And that's just, that's, that was primarily a standard line in a lot of contract and service companies. They don't, they don't want to do, pillaging their employees or...
Yes, I understand.
But most people who are this, aren't here for, they aren't intended to get permanent tuition. They like this because it works for their schedules.
And just like the other one, do you know other districts that use this?
This particular one, is this one that Amy used?
The previous.
The previous one.
This one we just found a candidate that we like, and what happened to be the label?
Understood.
I don't know anybody who's used gifted healthcare.
Anyone else have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
You and me?
Yeah, we can take a board recess.
Okay, we're going to take a board recess. Okay, we're going back into open session here. We need to switch our two closed sessions. Number 14, we're waiting for our attorney. They have not arrived yet, so we are going to do number 15 first. Do we have to do a motion to change the agenda then?
Do we?
Okay, so at this time, I need a motion.
Just go back and say, not open session, you're coming back from recess, and the time that you put in.
Okay, so we come back from our recess at 7:56. I will need a motion from someone to switch items 14 and 15 on our agenda. I motion to change the agenda to items number 14 being item number 15 then, and then item number 15 then being number 14. Do I have a second word? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry. Tracy, you seconded, right? Thank you. Okay, I need a motion, or I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of considering material exempt. Is that all right?
No.
I'm sorry. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiations sessions pursuant to MCL 15.268, section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
We just did the motion, so...
Did I? No, I read the top.
Pursuant to MCL 15.268, section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for purposes of negotiations.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Who did you support?
Candace.
Okay. Because she tells Cynthia, she doesn't know who you're putting down.
Okay, I'm sorry. Candace, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will be going back into the conference room?
Back into the conference room.